Seven oh two, we'll call the meeting to order. Mount Holly Planning Commission, Wednesday, May seventeenth. Are there any changes to the agenda? Hearing none, the agenda's approved. There are two sets of minutes, I believe, that we sent out. Can you remind me the dates?
The special meeting from May the third and the regular meeting on April the nineteenth.
Yes, any changes, corrections, additions for the minutes?
No.
Okay, we'll do it by unanimous consent then. Hearing none, the minutes are approved. Go right to our reports. Normally what we do is we give the administrative officer a chance to say whatever she wishes. But today we'll use this as an opportunity to officially welcome Faith Tempest as the, not only the new planning commission clerk, but the town's administrative officer.
Yay.
Appreciate your willingness to serve the town, really. It's a, it's a big deal. It's, um, it's a great service you're, you're providing the town. Do you have anything you'd like to share about your basically first day on the job?
I don't think anything major, as you say, it's my first day. I've been trying to get to grips with the systems and processes. But it seems that there is quite a lot of, maybe not a lot, but there is definitely work to be done. And including a lot of remediation regarding building registration, building construction registration, which has not been done. So I will be getting on to some of that as a first, first step.
So if I look forward to meeting you in person next month.
Okay, I look forward to meeting you too, Andy.
What, when someone doesn't file building registration, what's, what's the recourse? Are we supposed to do something? Is, are the listers supposed to do something?
Tar and feather. No, I think there's, there is a penalty in the ordinance, but the ordinance is, um... Well, no, it's, it's unclear how effectively that will hold up, but there is a penalty.
Hundred bucks a day?
Hundred bucks a violation, I think. I can't remember if the violation is a day or a week.
I was thinking it was a day.
It could be, it's, it could, it's a lot, and I'm not sure that's permitted anymore to be that high. But we, you know, there are, there are penalties in the ordinance as you'd expect, but I don't know if they've ever been used.
But there's a lot of construction going on right now that doesn't have any registration.
It seems to be the case.
I mean, a lot of it.
I think some of it is probably, you know, for new, especially for new people, they don't maybe know. Well, given the benefit of the doubt, they don't know about it.
Should we put something, well, that's my, is that up to us, or is it up to the listers, or the select board?
It has very little to do with the planning commission, so I think it's a matter of administrative, it's under the administrative purview of the administrative officer.
Okay.
And it's for the, mostly for the informational purposes of listers, but it's, one thing we did last year was we kind of shifted that responsibility out of the planning commission, because it's not really properly administered here. We're not really supposed to be taking those kinds of actions, in my opinion. So, I don't know. I think Faith are gonna take some time and get a feel for what it...
I was just gonna suggest a note in the chit chat and the...
I think that's probably a good idea.
One of my suggestions would be to probably every six months, put a note in the chit chat and send out to the Mount Holly Newsflash, just so that people don't forget.
Or reminded, yeah.
And it wouldn't be a bad idea to, I think, probably would suggest to the auditors that the A.O. do an annual report. I think that would be a good idea. So have it in the town book, in a reminder, please do these things, something to that effect. Sort of somewhat related to that, I think I sent around that thing about fire permits. I talked to Carol today, she posted a version of it on the board. Just a, you know, I think for the town point of view, it's a little bit of a C.Y.A., make sure people know that they are supposed to be doing that. You don't really get involved in it, but you know, potentially...
That's pretty much in the chit chat every month and a few other places.
Outdoor burning?
No, this is about construction permits.
From the state?
Yeah.
For burning construction refuges?
No. Any, any construction, renovation, additions for any public building needs to be permitted by the state. And that was, I didn't know that.
Oh.
And I'm assuming a lot of...
I don't think he's not talking about burn permits anymore.
You said fire permits.
Yeah, you said fire permits.
Yeah, it is, it is a, it is a fire, it is the fire safety department.
Oh.
Department of Fire Safety, it's right there, we can pull it over.
So it's a fire safety permit?
It's not a burn permit.
State, correct. Not, has nothing to do with burning, it's a construction permit.
Okay.
All public buildings in the state need a state construction permit. I did not know.
And they...
I think a lot of people don't.
And they need a licensed plumber, and they need a license.
I don't know about any of that, but they need plans to be filed with the state, whatever. So Carol's gonna put that, and Carol didn't know that either, this news to a lot of us, and maybe we shouldn't say that on recording, but she's gonna put it in the chit chat.
Okay.
So, and Faith may end up kind of handing those pamphlets out. We should probably put it on the website too, I don't think we did that, but we should, oh shit. Anyway. I think we've got a little bit off of your report, did you have anything else?
All right now.
Okay, perfect. I, I think I had a couple things, I mean, one that you probably are aware of. The select board voted to approve the bylaw. And let's see, I had something else real quick. Just an announcement, I mean, we mentioned at the last meeting, there's a Belmont workshop for the village on, a week from today at five thirty in the community room below the library. And that's working with a planner to hopefully put together some sort of plan for village improvements. And the village seems to be a hot topic right now, so we'll see how that goes. I found that information, I sent around to you an email that, that Belmont Village is actually in the state historic register. I was previously unable to find that information, I think, I don't think I've added that to the town plan draft yet, but we should probably roll that in. And I got an email, I don't know if I sent it out to you or not, but we got an information, I'm sorry, email from the conservation commission offering to help us with the town plan and asking how they could do so. And I told them like, in not so many words, but we're a little bit far along in the process and, you know, maybe just like reviewing drafts at this point, because as you probably all recall, last year we did ask for some help on specific things and we, we didn't get it, but I think right now it would be helpful for them to take a look at the things that they, you know, presumably know about the, you know, nature stuff and conservation stuff and tell us what they think. So there's a meeting on, I think it's July sixth, and I'll try to plan to attend that and tell them what we decide. I said I would bring the idea to you and we could decide amongst ourselves what we want to, how we want to involve them.
Is it a meeting on July sixth?
June sixth, I'm sorry, yeah, thank you, June sixth, their next meeting essentially. So what do you think? I don't think I put it on the agenda, so let's just discuss it real quick right now. What do you think? Is there something specific we'd like them to help us with? Or, what do you think?
I thought the historic roads and trees, along the historic roads might be a good thing for them to have some input into, because they have the tree stuff going on.
So...
You're talking the conservation commission?
Yeah.
You mean the scenic roads?
Yes.
Okay. I mean, we did ask them about scenic roads before.
And we didn't get anything, but reiterate that.
They didn't wanna look into it.
I'd really like to know last tree inventory.
I mentioned that too, I think that's a good thing to reiterate.
I think if there's one thing that's really important in that.
Okay, I'm on board with that, so, um, I mean, we can come up with a list of things. I think that is probably not something that needs to get done for the town plan, but it could be done in parallel, or, you know.
Yeah, or...
It's gonna take a while, probably.
I thought the town plan was supposed to identify roads that we wanted the scenic views to be protected.
Well, there's two, yes, it can. There's two different things. There's scenic roads themselves, which is sort of a little bit different than views, but then there's scenic views which couldn't be from a road or what have you, but, you know, town plans in the past have had a handful of scenic roads defined.
And part of what makes the scenic road is the tree canopy or the tree...
It ten, yeah, that's certainly one, one thing. Maple Hill Road is always on the list.
It's the trees and the stone walls and the views.
And the view, yeah. Question, I think, about if we want, I mean, and one of my concerns about sort of asking them as a task to do something is how long that's gonna take to turn around, because I'm, you know, as I think all our plans have been to kind of move this thing along in the next few months, and then we can kind of go back to one medium. That'd be kind of nice, speaking for myself. So I, I think that's a good suggestion, and it doesn't necessarily block our progress on the town plan.
No, I don't think it blocks it, and if anything, it makes it, because God, goodness only knows that if this stuff starts to really become, I mean, there's spots in Vermont that have been affected, but not like mass, like you've seen in other states.
States, yeah.
And this Vermont, the state of Vermont's usually, we'd like, you know, right on top, I handed out all sorts of free money for towns. So they might be, you know, if we start, the state starts getting affected statewide, they might be more interested in some sort of grant funding or something, and that might, you know, like, secure any sort of aid that would help the town if we had it listed in the town plan, that was a project goal there.
Yeah, I think we do have it in there, the inventory, but having them actually work on implementing it would be good. Andy, I know you've been involved in, in the town plan draft extensively, so what, what are your thoughts on how the conservation commission may be able to help us and whether or not we have the sort of luxury of waiting for that to happen?
Well, I had the same thoughts that you did, which was that we're kind of far along in this, but, um... I mean, they could review stuff, they can, I like Bridget's idea, I mean, they are already working on some stuff. If they could kind of move that along and, uh, share with us what they think would be, what they think would be, you know, that part of their work that they think would be useful to include in the plan, then we could evaluate that. It seems to be the most, to me, to be the most efficient way to do it. Sorry?
Sorry, I stepped on you there. So you, for example, like the work they've been doing on Star Lake, like let us, can you key us into it?
Yeah, and, and...
Okay.
And the shade trees and the scenic, uh,
Alright.
uh, roads and, and all that stuff.
Yeah.
That, 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 as I understand it, they've been working on.
Okay, that sounds good to me. Should we just go with that?
Yeah.
Okay. And I'll, I'll just relay that to them, and I'll try to attend that meeting. You're all welcome to, it's a public meeting. You feel so inclined, and if you are gonna go, maybe I don't have to, but, so let me know if you do. Alright, so good enough, we can move on.
Sounds good to me.
Yeah, I think I had something for you later, okay, so we didn't need to do that in reports anyway. Alright, um, correspondence, I did not see any subdivision proposals, you have any either, B.C.R.s? You wanna share anything about those?
Uh, yeah, we had, I found in the in tray this morning, three of them, one on a very old phone. Is, I think the name is Long, Long Gaborde, Long Gaborde. Anyway, it's Sawyer Hill Road, um, adding...
Is it one forty something, is it?
One forty-three.
So it's that one down the bottom, maybe?
It's right on the corner of Sawyer...
That one right on the corner, maybe?
Yeah.
There's like a new shop or something going on, is that what it is?
It used to, it used to be Bob Graham's place, I believe.
Oh, that's the salsa making?
Uh, the previous owner was Steve Wilson.
Yeah.
Um, the proposal is to add an eight, add eight feet to the north side wall. It's very unclear to me the north side wall of what, but I'm assuming of a shed of some description.
There's a big building there.
Yeah.
I think there's just one building.
Yeah.
One building.
Yeah, that's just one building.
Yeah.
It looked like some fairly, I just, just drove by quickly, went on one oh three, but it looked like there was some very, fairly serious construction going on over there, but...
It's a big building.
Is that the one that they're talking about putting the three phase into? I don't know.
What did you say, John?
There's some building over there that has had, has requested three phase power, I'm wondering...
Huh. Well, I, I stopped by that place and asked what was going on, and the guys told me that someone had been living in the attic space and it cut the rafters in a way that made the roof start falling in, so they were basically rebuilding the roof, but it also looked like they were building a new outer wall on, on one side. So I don't really know the full scope of it.
It sounds like it might be that one.
Could be, sounds like it. Building, rebuilding north wall. Alright, anyways.
Um, the next one is Graham, building on, um, twenty-seven oh six, one oh three south. Building a metal carport.
Twenty-seven south. That, that's two point seven miles from that looking out down. Is that right? That's the direction.
That might go.
Does it give a little X where, where the intersection is? It does, okay. That is where it comes in handy on one oh three and one fifty-five. Alright, well, whatever. Report.
And then the last is Curtis Murphy and Curtis, um, at
Kevin Hubert's old place.
Forty, forty-one Route fifty-five, Kevin Hubert's old place, finishing the attic and adding skylights to the primary bedroom.
Cool. Alright, anything else?
Those are the ends that, uh, that people brought to my attention.
I, I still need to double check with Carol about the wastewater permits. I, I find it very difficult to believe there haven't been zero, but I think there's still a bit of a miscommunication that we're gonna need a copy of it when it gets recorded, so, or maybe if you have a chance to, to connect with her, maybe next week. Well, I guess that is something we neglected to say, is that Faith will hold office hours Tuesday at ten, is that right?
Yes.
For an hour starting next week.
Tuesday from ten to eleven?
Yeah.
Every week, pretty much?
Unless there's some reason why I can't do it.
Okay.
Project change.
Yeah, yeah. And email, I don't think, I don't think... No, I don't think we got anything. Uh, no new business on the agenda, so let's skip right over to, uh, the bridge research. Did you find anything else?
Um, I, like I said, I looked and we, I had found, I had handed them out last month.
Yeah.
The minutes that, um, they had decided to close the bridge and put in the cement barriers, and after that, there was nothing more done. It did say that they would have to have official resolution, and I never...
So, can I just ask, who they are?
The slot board.
Okay.
Yep. One second. Should I give them back? I don't know, where is it?
So why don't we tie in, why don't we tie in Ethan on that to help, to see if he can tell us where we need to go from here? And we'll just send the information to Jeff or both of you or whoever.
Yeah.
That seemed reasonable, Ethan's the transportation planner at the regional planning commission, and maybe he has some...
More information about...
Information on what is next.
Yeah, and then as far as the Star Lake Recreation Area rules, I could not find it in any sort of...
Did you look in the town record books in the back?
I did not look in the town record books, so that's...
Yeah, that's the next step, I think, for that. And unfortunately, there's not really a great way to search them. There is an index in the front, but it could be under Star Lake, it could be under ordinance, and... I mean, if you want, I can stop in sometime and, and do it with you, or I'm sure Carol can point you in the right direction.
Yeah, I'm sure I can dig some...
I'm guessing it's probably a goose chase, but it's something that's like worth looking at least once for in case.
If anybody would know, it would be David. He would, he might have a...
I asked him when I was in here, and he said that he didn't know, and he doesn't remember, did not remember, um, any sort of...
Dennis might know?
That's, okay, I can reach out to Dennis as well.
Or, you know, his dad was involved.
People from the community association too.
Yeah, it's just in case it comes back later, like, oh, how come you didn't ask me, you know, you always hear that kind of thing.
Yeah.
Okay, well, it's good. So we'll carry it forward again.
Do we have any idea how long it's been up there to like get us some, a little bit of a timeframe to look, or?
The, the actual, um, sign?
Yeah.
That's a good question.
I'm assuming most...
Since before nineteen eighty-three.
That, that, those rules were up since before nineteen eighty-three?
Yeah, yeah.
Wow, okay.
So...
I mean, when I first came here, they were up.
Well, so they moved it after you came here?
I have reason to believe they were up there when I first came, and that was in sixty-six.
Who owned it at that point in the town?
What?
Or was it a private?
Private, I think.
Ah, I believe that was private.
Town owned it when I got there.
Yeah, but when Jim was talking about the sixties, it was private, I'm pretty sure.
It got turned over in the sixties sometime, right?
Cause, um, oh god, it sounds like...
So it might have been just a private, private set of rules. You need to make your own rules on your own property, I guess, right, so?
Like on association.
No outsiders, but, uh, what's the...
That's Spring Lake.
Well, that was here too, it said Mount Holly residents only on it initially.
It does.
It does itself.
Yeah, that's the, that's, that's kind of what, that's the main thing why I'm interested to figure this out, is because if it actually is town residents only, we probably should say that in the plan, like it's private, like, oh, citizens only, residents only. But if it's not, we might wanna like X that out on the sign, but anyway. And it's also, it's also sort of related to whether or not, well, and we've talked sort of casually about whether or not our town residents are encouraged or permitted to use facilities in neighboring towns.
Spring Lake branch, they are not.
It'd be nice if we had a little...
No, you can't even join the club up there.
I know.
Where?
It's Spring Lake.
Well, I'm also thinking, you know, Weston has some nice facilities, and it's not too far away. If we had some sort of arrangement, I mean, they're, Weston people are not clamoring to use mountain facilities, but...
No.
If we had the ability to like, they have a nice swimming area, they have ice skating, you know, if we had some sort of, okay, it's okay for you to come, that would be something to know. Alright, so enough on that for now, we'll, we'll try to do a little bit more digging, and we'll see what comes up, but I'll get in touch with Ethan. Alright, town plan. Where do you wanna pick up? You wanna pick up on utilities, you said?
We were under utilities, working.
Faith, can we grab a couple of those over there?
Yeah, um, I was, I may go to get a clip or something to hold it.
Oh, that's alright.
Oh, you didn't have a stapler big enough to weigh one through that?
I have them here.
Okay, perfect.
I'm gonna take that one with me.
Yeah, you wanna grab one? Well, thank you for preparing those too, that really helps me out a lot. Printing these at home, it's pretty, pretty taxing.
What page is it on?
Uh, well, it starts on page...
Is it after transportation?
Yes, it is. It is after...
Forty-two. Life, the universe, and everything.
Yeah. Oh, the E.M.P.s and utilities and facilities? Oh, no, that's emergency services, nevermind. Okay.
Oh, so anyway, right in the first section here, communications, I did have, so a little bit more communication from Tended with Velco. I don't think I reported this to you all, did I? I asked them about two things primarily. One was the tower, maybe I talked about this last month, the tower, and see if we had any way to get it, use it as a backup site for dispatch. There's a whole process. But the other thing that I haven't really connected with them on is the use of the right of ways for recreation. It's mostly up to the private landowners, but what I'm curious to know is whether or not they forbid it. Right, cause some, some easements prohibit other uses under it. So it'd be kind of nice to know whether or not that could, if we approach the landowners and we say, hey, is this okay to use this big brand new, nice spanking road they just put in there for town recreation purposes, that would be kind of good to know. So I'll, I'll let you know when I hear back on that. Who wants to take us to, you wanna go through it, or how do you wanna do it?
I mean, I just have a few questions about, so under Mount Holly Rescue, I see a not-for-profit highlighted, so I'm assuming that that was supposed to be taken out, correct, because you said they're both...
Yeah, so we don't have the highlights here, do we?
Wait, where are we?
Uh, page forty-five, Mount Holly Rescue.
Oh, can we back up just for a minute?
Yep.
Yeah.
So there is a, right under communications, just when it starts, the town should encourage the use of battery backup and/or backup generators to limit disruption of the wired broadband. Is that, encourage who? The individual landowners, or?
Yeah. So it's a sort of complicated subject, apparently, it goes, there's like been discussions at the P.E.C. or whatever they call it now, isn't it, the Utilities Commission? So whether or not they subsidize that or not? So, old phone systems, right, you could lose, theoretically lose power and you could still make your call.
Oh, you're talking about the telephone systems, then?
All, but it's, it's VoIP now, so it's digital, phones are digital now, so it's, wired broadband is exactly the same as phone now.
Well, you can't use your landline for very long after you lose power.
Precisely, because the battery in the unit is very limited.
It's supposed to be good for eight hours. It's good for about two minutes.
Yeah, I think it varies considerably depending on how old they are.
Good for about two minutes.
Oh.
So unless you have a generator or a, you know, a bigger battery...
I thought the town had a whole long discussion about...
I know, they, yeah, there's been discussions.
And then what happened?
I don't think anything.
I just think this is a really nebulous, um, statement, and we should say that the town should encourage the utility to provide the backup, or the town would encourage, encourages residents to, I mean, it, otherwise what good is the statement? It's not clear who they're encouraging.
I mean, but, in this instance here, the statement's still not any, correct me if I'm wrong, John, but this statement, it doesn't matter either way unless somebody's putting in a new, like, you can't force or convince anybody to do it that doesn't want to unless they're going through a new subdivision that triggers Act two fifty, correct, incorrect?
Well, this, so there's two, there's basically two types of statements in the town plan now, well, three, maybe, so just purely descriptive. And then there's ones like this that are suggestions for the town to take action. So anything that's indented and said the town should, it's sort of like a little bit of a, here's something we might wanna follow up on, or we might want to help people with, or something to that effect. And then the third type of statement is something that is a little bit more like what you're describing, it's a policy statement that would be used in Act two fifty. So in this case, it's true, it's like, what is that, what is that actually gonna do?
What is it meaning?
Well, that, I, those are good, those are fair, fair, uh, criticisms. We could improve the language here however we want, but it seems to me the general idea is a good one, that for public safety, for a lot of reasons, the town should, when possible, either make it possible, encourage, subsidize, whatever the technique is, help people be able to call nine-one-one when the power goes out. That's the kind of idea.
Well, with the new cell tower, um, you ha, if you have a cellphone on their system, um, you do have access to nine-one-one.
Yeah, that'll help considerably.
Other than that, um...
And I think, and you may know better, but I think even if you're not on A.T.N.T., you can still make a nine-one-one.
You may be able to.
I think it'll cross, but I'm not sure of that.
I would have to.
Nine nine-one-one, I'd be surprised if it didn't.
Yeah, maybe it's, I don't remember if it's just a purely a technology thing, problem, or if it's.
I I happen to have two cellphones and one of them's through VTAL. And I can call from almost anywhere in town.
Yeah, okay, well, so.
That cellphone, I, and.
That's the kind of, that's what I think, and Andy, do you wanna, does that sound, does my description of that uh sound accurate to you? That's how we.
Yeah, that's my understanding as well. And and just on on the question of those batteries. What VTAL doesn't tell you is that those batteries need to be replaced periodically. So that's why they say it's eight hours, but most people find it's far less, cuz they're not replacing them.
And there's probably no way to tell. Until you need it.
I think they usually do send you a letter once.
Okay, yeah. Like, I I don't read those anyway, Rich.
But tho- those batteries, yeah, I mean. Well, within six months of when we got them, when the power went out, phones went out.
Well, I mean, the. It would be nice if we could encourage everyone in town to have a generator too, but that's not gonna happen. So it's like, I don't know, what do you want to say?
I would just leave it out, but.
I think it.
I think it sort of helps raise awareness of there's an issue there maybe.
I suspect everybody knows there's an issue there. About the time the power goes out.
I just live somewhere where it doesn't go out.
I kind of agree with Bridget, it has the sort of sound of a public service announcement, I'm not sure it really needs to be in the plan. But I could go either way on it.
Well, it does sort of, it highlights, I mean, okay, maybe we could change it to a statement. Or we do have a statement in the previous sentence, I guess. So I mean, this, the 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 action item there follows directly from the previous sentence, like, here's a weakness, here's a vulnerability. Uh, perhaps a public safety issue. What is the action item that we're willing to to take in response? Previous select boards, I mean, I mean Jennifer Matthews in particular was like very, very bullish on. She was going to these meetings like every month trying to get them to provide them for us, I think that's my understanding of the, what she was doing.
Get, get, I'm sorry. John, get who to provide what?
The, I I don't know if it was the state through the Public Utilities Commission or. The regulators or the or VTAL themselves to provide batteries for people.
She was trying to get, as I recall it, she was trying to get the Public Utilities Commission to require VTAL. To sort of fix that problem.
Yeah, to close the gap.
Yeah.
Right, right. But that that's different than urging people to get backup systems in case the batteries fail.
Yeah, I think that, I think this steps beyond. Some what the Planning Commission ought to be talking about.
Yeah, cuz to deal with that, you'd either have tell people that they needed to get a generator. Or put in them backup battery systems that GMP is selling.
Batteries that you could, that, I mean, that was the whole thing that Jennifer was trying to do, right, is to replace the. Low milliamp hour. Uh, batteries that are interned, built in to ones that could last at least partly through an outage, that's what was my understanding. Capable, like actually capable battery backups for these units. It's not the same as like putting in a Tesla Powerwall or installing a Kohler generator, like, you know, this is something that would have cost the pr- the the. Provider.
It's already more discussion than it needs.
Yeah, okay, well, we could just take it out if you want. I don't know, it just seems to me that would be something that the town would benefit from, but. What do you think? What do you wanna?
I mean, I can see it both ways, but to be honest, if it's somebody has an issue with it, then they can put in a generator. Or put in some sort of better. Better unit that would provide them with power, so I don't see any problem with removing it, I don't think it's a major issue for anybody in town.
I guess one, and maybe this is thinking a little bit outside the box here, but it could be a way to. Link into grants for generators. But maybe this is too vague to do that. Alright, so let's do this, if we can't find something a little bit more specific to say about it, we'll take it out. We'll do like one more try, see if we. I'll just put vague. Exclamation point, okay, alright, then we should jump to what Andrew had, or did you have another one?
Do you have more, Bridget? Nothing, sure?
You were on page.
Well, not before we get to you.
Well, I do, but.
Oh, well, then go, John.
So in on forty-four, in government, that was basically all the yellow lines. Anybody have anything to say about that? I didn't really have a chance to talk to Carol about it specifically yet, uh. Young men needs for this office. I do know that we're very frequently bumping into the age issue. And I know it sort of does link to some of the ideas that we have in here in the next chapter or subchapter with. Um, plans have been kind of floated around for many years about combining town facilities. So, I don't know if any, just wanted to point out, there's still a lot probably missing from. Subchapter B. Anybody have any immediate thoughts, or should we just come back to that when we have more info?
Come back to it when you have more.
I know you've had this sort of on your radar for quite a long time, but I don't know if you have any thoughts on it.
There's other people have had it heavier on their radar than I. I mean, I had a, I had a design at one time, but it's disappeared.
Okay, well, let's come back to that then, it's just something that's sort of, I'm getting a little bit of a back burner, but alright, we'll jump into your rescue, what did you have to rescue?
Oh, I just was, uh, said on page forty-five, it's the rescue squad just had not-for-profit in there. On the first one, yeah.
Yeah, I think my understanding is that they aim to change it, but I, they haven't yet.
They aim to make it a not-for.
That's my understanding and I don't wanna speak out of turn, but that's what I had heard.
I believe they're working on a five oh one C three.
Did I have it just highlighted?
Yeah, it's just highlighted, that's why I had a question.
We'll change it, we'll take out not-for-profit and we'll just leave it as a private organization.
Yeah, just because.
Spelled wrong, by the way.
What is?
Organization.
It sure is, good shit, good, how come the spell checker didn't find that one? Is that actually a word?
How I spell.
By the way, Faith, not all of this needs to be in the.
Yeah, I'll.
You could just say.
But it's easier for me to write it.
Okay, yeah.
So my next one's on fifty-three, so if anybody's got any stuff between there and there.
Uh, I will say that emergency management, I have uh sent to Jeff, who is the EMD, Jeff Chase. And he's looking it over still, so. I think he glanced at it, didn't see anything obvious, but wants a little more time to to go through it. Let's see, where are we here?
So there's a highlighted paragraph on the top of page forty-seven. Having these mitigation programs in place reduces the town's match against state and federal funds. Paragraph three on page forty-seven.
Yeah, why did I highlight that? I think, I thought maybe we could reword it, and maybe it was. A duplication of something that was already there.
Alright.
I think I copied it from somewhere, to be honest.
Okay, just so you know, it's there and needs looking at.
Uh, there is something else highlighted, right, oh yeah, here on forty-eight.
So the Mount Holly ordinance regarding.
I don't think we have anything of the sort, but other towns seem to have that, and so. I just wanted, in in the town that I probably copied this from had it, obviously, so. I'm curious.
It's page forty-eight and it's, uh, starts with, well, there's several. Indents and then it starts with the statewide enhanced nine-one-one system.
I think you could probably just take that part right out, because it's goes on to say most structures now have unique road addresses in accordance with twenty-four VSA sections. Uh, two twenty-nine, sixteen and forty-four twelve, or twenty-one.
Yeah.
And the town of Mount Holly, and I would, under the assumption, we probably just end at the state's requirements. I don't believe we have any requirements for labeling.
I was just curious, like, where that idea even came from, like, are there?
Other towns.
Or like, I'm pretty sure we don't have it.
What, what makes you sure we don't have it?
Cuz I've been through the vault like a lot and they have never come across it.
Well, and not just that, but like, I mean, I could see how another town would have. Some sort of ordinance regarding street names and addresses, but the reality is, is I don't think we've done that in depth into. Naming or addressing streets.
Well, when, when nine-one-one system happened, they went through each of the town roads and changed the names.
Yes, that's the first part of the.
Right.
Statement, and then it says, and the town of Mount Holly ordinance regarding street names, and if you copied this from somebody else's.
I did, and I changed town of Mount Holly from town of whatever.
Yeah, it could be that they have an ordinance on like how something is named, or like. Whatever, you know.
So what I, what I wanna, wanted to look at is, I gotta first of all remember where I got it from, but then go look for their ordinance. And see what it says about where it came from and then see if we actually had one, but. That's, if we can't find it, if that's a similar thing to what I said before, if we can't find anything, we'll just take that part of the sentence.
Yeah, I.
Cuz I think it stands alone without it.
It does, I think that that's probably just for like maybe a town that had some way that they were naming streets or whatever.
Yeah.
Do we have structures that aren't in the nine-one-one system?
Yeah. Yeah, we do.
Cell towers, isn't it?
Quite a few things, actually, so all the hydrants are supposed to be in there, all communication towers are supposed to be in there, and there's a bunch of stuff. Um, that that, I think, I think bridges are supposed to be in there, everything's supposed to have an address. And I don't think it does right now, so that's just a. We're gonna probably do that when we go through and do our hydrant grant and try to.
Cuz I know somebody that, not in this town, tried to get a phone put in at a location. And couldn't, because they didn't have, couldn't have an address.
Interesting, yeah.
And was building there and power there and.
I don't know the details, but even even call boxes on utility poles.
They, they wouldn't even give them a phone.
I just mean, you know what I mean, like the, on the utility pole, sometimes it's call box and those will have an address. So anyway. Alright, so where were you now? We were.
I was on page fifty-three, so.
Yeah, I do have something in between. Um, elder care, I mentioned, I shared with. The Green Mountain Friends Group, the senior group, and I'll let you know when I hear back, I think they have a meeting today, so. Definitely should put something about bone builders in there. Overmount is a new thing I heard about, that's about transportation for seniors, that could be kind of interesting if there's. There was some question last month about the Odd Fellows Hall, but. I looked back at um what Dennis sent and he didn't say anything about trust, so do you remember that conversation?
Isn't this the call?
Yeah.
It was sent out.
Yeah, that's what, that's what Dennis gave us, but Stephen said last month that, or or maybe it was the last meeting. That it was actually held by a trust, so I don't.
Oh, yeah, he was saying that it was owned, not officially owned by the Odd Fellows up here, but it was in a trust somewhere else.
But I, Dennis didn't say that.
Green Mountain's neighbors is not a nonprofit yet, on the bottom of page fifty.
Hell, not yet.
I mean, I think they're going to apply for it, but they are not a nonprofit.
Okay, so.
Potential nonprofit, whatever, I don't know.
So, alright, I'm not sure what to say there, maybe in the next few months they'll. They'll get there.
I know.
We'll just highlight it again, um, we're getting close to fifty-three now, right? Recreational facilities, I mean, there's not a whole lot there right now, but. Okay, fifty-three, there you are.
Well, on the community museum, the historical museum, they might like to have more information there, I don't know. If that's all you want, but.
I mean, we could put in a little bit more information about like what it offers, um, you could maybe save the tusk and stuff or.
The tusk is a pretty big deal and then it has histories of the families in town.
Okay. Well, I'll ask, I'll send Stephen a message about that. You know, we're kind of, you know, we do, we do have a little bit about the other ones, I guess.
Yeah.
At least like one sentence, um, tusk and. What do you call that, um? Okay, so ask Stephen. Fifty-three now, let's go there. Right, what do you got?
Under the um, plan for bicycle and pedestrian trails, so that would just be under like town trails again, correct? To, the town should develop a plan for bicycle and pedestrian trails.
Like a recreation plan.
And then under wastewater.
Was that, was there a question?
No, that was my question, was it was gonna be like the town trails under the recreation.
Yeah, something that I think that probably Conservation Commission could 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 potentially do, like have a, you know, like a, come up with a.
And then of like existing tr- or existing trails or trails that, or roads that work well and stuff like that.
Or or work with landowners to develop new ones, whatever, I know the bike one is a hot topic.
Yeah, the, and then the town, um, under wastewater was just, um. The town should secure grant funding to plan a wastewater system. I was curious about that as far as, um, if it would be. I'm not exactly sure how Wallingford is set up, but I believe it's like paid to be on the town sewer and stuff like that, is that kind of what this is implying? More of like a per- a company like, like the fire department, it's a town entity, but.
Sometimes they are.
Yeah, that's, and that was kind of my thought, would be a a better situation than having it be the town is, town's problem.
Yeah, though, so, just so, let me. Sort of summarize that, so what this, what this is saying here is. Um, regardless of how a wastewater system is um run or administered. It would, it would still have to be, the town would be the party, the select board would be the party to authorize seeking grant funding for it. Um, cuz there's capital costs involved, significant ones. Um, but I, so that's what this is trying to say, what we don't say here, and we probably could. Is I think what you're saying next is. Um, how, you know, suggesting ways that you might run a municipal sort of system. And my understanding of it, very limited, is that they're very similar to fire districts. And so that they're, it defines an area and those people within it are served by the service. And those people generally bear the cost.
Yeah, that, and that's kind of what I was curious about.
Cuz it doesn't make sense for other people to pay for a service they don't, right, generally speaking.
And I was wondering the same thing about the water, um, with the aqueducts.
For, uh, for like a, so there are water districts.
Already?
Well, they're not in this town, but there are, I mean, there's very fire, they're called fire districts, I think they just generally get used for other things.
Yeah, I I understand that, like, there's, there's water districts that the people, again, that are using it bear the.
Right, so you mean like should the aqueduct?
Like, yeah, like should in this, this state that that the aqueduct should be set up the same way as far as. People in the district are, that are using.
I don't think anybody in, help me find where exactly you're looking at here.
Paragraph one of water and wastewater.
Yeah, the town should, um.
I don't think there's a town should for it.
Okay.
I think it's just describing that there is one.
Okay.
Well, it says the public use of this water supply shall be maintained.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that's a policy that basically doesn't, doesn't necessarily imply a cost. So what I think would be a a bigger step. So what I think would be a a bigger step would be saying that this is, we want to convert this into a public water supply, like a. Okay, so it's a little bit of a word game, so like the public's use of the water is a little bit different than. Saying it's a public water supply because that's like one of those phrases that like gets you into like regulation. You have to provide clean water for people. All these things, so what I intended by this was not to propose it be a. A new municipal water source for the village.
Just have something that's it's already existing.
Retain it, um, it it you know, could be used for emergencies, sort of like with the legal trails, like don't give it up. It, you know, theoretically could be used and I it might, you know, I think Faith probably has some some say in this, but um, my view is that. And I think it was actually Stephen suggesting at the last meeting is turn that red. Building that sister cap cabin shack into a. Just a place where water comes out. People could use it. Yeah, their own purposes, but just clearly say this has not been tested.
Run it through the overflow of.
Right.
Down the crack.
Right, exactly, whatever, um. Yeah, I want to be clear that not advocating turning it into like a public water supply, cause that's. With regulations and stuff, that's a pretty expensive proposition.
Yeah, it is, then that's kind of why I was. Kind of semi curious about what the like if there was stating like the town should fix all this up and then it's like, well, that's.
I think that would be very expensive, it's not really a need for today, but. The way I've I've been advising, I think I said this last meeting. Is that with the world going the way it is and the proximity of so many wells to each other in the village. There is a possibility that something bad happens and then. The aquifer is damaged, poisoned, whatever tainted. And having a way to get clean water, eve- even if it's just an emergency, even if it's a boil order. Makes sense to continue and not lose it. Okay, does that make sense? But yeah, there's no like actual task for the town.
Yeah, and then I under the waste or the wastewater, I was. I guess something about disstringing it would be.
Yeah, so what what do you suggest, do we just try to come up with something for that?
Yeah, the the town or. I don't even know if the town. Pursues a wastewater system, have it district, I'm not sure.
Okay, I think I I think I know what you're trying to say, I'll 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 work with Andy and we'll, did we lost Andy, didn't we?
I think so.
He warned us, he wasn't gonna pass. That's funny, cause I was just about to ask him on that one, we'll we'll come up with something and you can look at it, alright. Um, water district, wastewater district, wastewater. Yeah, and I think that's perfectly perfectly reasonable thing, alright.
Um, on the solid waste.
Yeah.
I would not put in how much the stickers are.
Take the two dollars out?
Yeah, it's established by.
Okay, yeah, I guess it could change every year, huh?
Yeah.
We'll just keep that, cause I I think I wanted.
Fifty, isn't it? Yeah.
I wanted people to know how they could get them, so let's just take.
Two fifty.
It is two fifty?
Yeah.
That went up this year?
I don't know, it's been two fifty for a while.
Um, I've never taken anything over the dump over here.
So you just do.
Let's take the money out.
Yeah.
Alright, cool. Two, two fifty, no way. Alright.
Just put it in the dumpster.
Wasn't checking my change when Karen handed it back to me. Alright, that's fine.
Well, I was wondering why I paid so much.
Anything else?
She likes you better.
That's why I pay more.
So the scenic areas that are defined.
Let me just pause one second. Do you have anything as fire warden about burning stuff, you wanna put anything in there, are you comfortable with that, open burning stuff?
Stop burning your trash.
Four, page fifty four, second till third to last paragraph. Something about there.
Page fifty four you said?
There's not much to add.
Yeah, okay, I didn't know if you wanted to put in anything about needing a permit or anything like that.
Yeah, my neighbors do it all the time.
You could, you could. Burning with a permit, but.
Okay, well, that's fine, I just wanted to give you the opportunity to. See if you wanted to add anything there. Okay, sorry to interrupt.
That's fine, it, yeah, I agree with what you have in that one, um, anything before page sixty, anybody else?
Sixty, okay, so we're jumping out of, we're finishing up on utilities and facilities, right?
Yeah.
Okay, anybody have anything on, there's some, you you might have some thoughts on energy? Anybody have any thoughts on energy, no, actually, energy doesn't have a soul, right, that's in, that's another part of the plan. Energy is just um, utilities.
Right.
Okay. Uh, I put in that information that's that was new to me about that new transmission line coming through the underground one, I thought that that you guys probably knew about that already. Did you know that one?
Hadn't heard.
Clean power link. Coming right down one oh three.
Oh, okay, yeah, that's that's been coming now for five, six years.
I didn't know about it, whatever.
Yeah, we had uh, we had samples of the uh, cable.
I think it'll be mostly invisible to us, I think it'll just happen.
All underground.
Yeah, I mean, I think it'll just happen and that's that, so.
Invisible, so it's not, and it's it's gonna. Visible till it's not.
Well, until. It probably will make. Some construction projects a little bit more challenging, cause they'll have to work around those lines.
Hmm, I don't know if it'll bother construction too badly, not if it comes right down one oh three.
I think it's gonna go down the railroad right away too.
Yeah, that's what your email said, they said they were gonna come down the railroad right away.
Oh, cause they want, I mean, earlier they were talking about uh, one oh three itself.
Yeah.
Well, I said railroad right away to a certain point and then it was gonna go down one oh three ways and then connect back to the railroad.
Okay.
Cause down, see down through Ludlow Village and stuff, they'll probably run the railroad, I would suspect, upon the side of the mountain there. Cause down through the bel- village would be an issue.
It would be a nightmare. Alright.
So, uh, you said anything before sixteen, is that where you're jumping, okay, so. Uh, I have a orange, yellow highlight there on the first section. State GIS map does not show species, I don't think that matters to us too much, but um. They don't tell us where these things are, and there's a reason for that, they don't want people to go disturb them, but on the other hand. We're supposed to make a map of these things.
Well, do do we have anything, do we know if we have any?
Yeah, they just don't tell us what they are.
We have rare, threatened and endangered.
Yeah, we do, yes, we do. So what it says is, yes, Mount Holly, you have them. You have to have an internal login or something to find out what the species is. And for some of them, you can see the species, but then it only shows you like a giant blob in where it might occur. So I don't know how the heck we do that, so that's why I put that note on there.
And it might occurs the best part.
Well, they know exactly where it is, but they don't wanna, I know I have one on my property, unfortunately. It's cool. But it does sort of like impact my ability to do things.
Not in my backyard.
Well, it's not, it's not exactly, it's on the railroad, but. They, but they have these, I get people coming through my property all the time looking for it. From the state, they always say, oh, we gotta go look and see if it's still there, and it's like, it hasn't been there for twenty years, but we have to keep looking every year forever. They just come wandering in, you know.
Alright, well, so.
Just kind of like I look out my door, my dog's barking at somebody, like who are you, what are you doing here?
Alright, the mast stands one, I mean, I, so my point on both of these is. The town will maintain and protect the functional integrity of all mast stands. And increase the number of acres of mast stand habitat that's under long term stewardship or conserved in the town. Is this on town land, the town doesn't own land?
No, it's on any land.
Done individual land.
Yeah.
Okay. So we're saying this would be part of the town plan, that we, the town could control. The removal of mast stands and.
In Act two fifty.
Okay.
And what's it mean?
Say in act two fifty, or is the idea that if you're disturbing a mast?
Has regulatory power in act two fifty.
Did that say that somewhere?
The whole doc.
The whole document only has regulatory power in act two fifty.
Alright, okay, never mind.
Yeah, so it's mast stands are up there in the state with like vernal pools.
Okay.
So there's things that they want to maintain, so there's there's, I mean, these are, this, I didn't write any of this text.
Okay.
Um, very little of it, deer wintering areas, mast stands and. Vernal pools which are slightly different, and then wherever they think the endangered species are. Determined by either the state endangered species act or the federal one.
Alright.
You know. Uh, they don't tell us where they are, but. So the mast stands are are things that are subject, yeah, like the, that's something the Conservation Commission in the long term. I don't wanna get them involved now, but um, could be, could help with that, you know, there aren't that many anymore. That's the fact, right, so we're not talking about this widespread thing, beech trees have really been decimated. Uh, a a oak, you know, acorn producing oaks are coming in. But.
They were all clear.
Few and far between, so anyway. Deer ring during areas is another one where it's supposedly like a big deal, um, but. I mean, they just, you know.
And the state basically determines where all those are.
Yeah.
But then people build houses in the middle of them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It hasn't stopped any.
Makes hunting better.
With the house there.
And you're hunted from the house.
There are people who like to do that, they are, there's some.
I could open my window.
Yeah. Um, alright, so we're aiming towards sixty, right, was there anything else before page sixty? No, okay, let's get there, scenic areas, is that where we?
Yeah, I was just curious if um, with all this, all the scenic areas listed, um, if that's. So that's to protect the view um, in saying that, is that saying like, if you're looking at, let's say. The view across Star Lake to the northeast, if somebody wanted to build somewhere in the northeast, that would be restricting them under act two fifty?
Maybe like don't, try not to put it right in the dang view, yeah, like try to do it in a way that um, preserves the resource.
The view from Star Lake or whoever's got property along there that sees that view, okay.
Yeah, you know who it is, there's only really one property over there.
Well, but there's, there's a bunch of this stuff listed, so. I mean.
Is that the yurt?
No.
The yurts probably got a pretty good view of it.
The northeast.
Standing on the beach and you're looking across the lake, whose property is it?
It's already been built on.
No.
Who is it? We'll talk later.
Adjacent to Star Lake Wildlife Management Area.
Oh, I know what you mean.
The view across Star Lake, there's two properties across the lake.
Yeah.
But it's sort of like, it doesn't say you can't. It says, don't try to, try to do it, you know.
Don't cut every tree up there.
Would be in an act two fifty.
Yeah, but it's still is still restricting. Because somebody else.
Basically, it's just don't cut every tree.
Two miles away. I said it's somebody that's, you know, two miles away looking at land that somebody else might own and trying to restrict it, that's all. Um, and then on pages. Like on these views, like I'm looking all the way across the valley and I don't want anybody building over here because I own over on this side of it. And I might have to look at it. It was okay for me to plank my part here, but it's not okay for anybody else to put their part over there, because I will have to look at it.
Well, not, no.
Yes, that's the way that ball rolls.
Not, not really. No, I mean, like if you look at the kind of um. Typically, the way like settlement happened until probably in the last twenty, thirty years. It did actually preserve views and the views evolved, of course, like they weren't always forests, they were fields, they were a variety of other things. Even barns, those things are all considered very much part of the traditional landscape. But what is like a pretty new phenomenon is ridgeline homes.
Because they got better views than everybody below them.
No, that's not what I think people find somewhat objectionable. Is that uh, it's out of character, it is um. Not particularly sensitive, um, both ecologically in terms of like the. Community values. Um, and not really particularly smart. Um, they're not very good places to live. Right, I mean, they're subject to winds and high energy costs and very difficult access and erosion. And you can't even have a garden, I mean, all kinds of things and it, they tend to be places that change hands frequently and. I mean, there's a whole lot of reasons. Um, but you know, as far as these places, I don't think they're very. Um, when you tell me, it seems like these aren't very controversial, you think these are things that if somebody had. Was looking at the view of Okaloa, I I don't really have that kind of view, I kind of wish I did, I could see a little bit of it, but uh. If there were the view that people have from like. The trailside condominiums on the other side of the mountain. I think that would be a bummer, I think like the vast majority of the town would be pretty bummed about that. You know, seeing a spider web of condominiums that are million, two million, three million dollars each.
Down on one oh three at night and look up that direction.
Yeah.
Looks like a Christmas tree.
Yeah, so.
Especially when covid came out. Can lit right up.
Yeah, I don't think it's, I don't think it's necessarily like jealousy or anything, I think it's, you know, that's a.
No, you got three that overlook. A whole large area right up the top of Hillville.
Well, I'm not saying it's a jealousy thing, I'm, what I'm saying is it's just a more of a like. I don't wanna look at what you're building and you're building it in a scenic area, so you can't do that.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think that's, that doesn't, that's not what I was hoping to communicate, well, that's not the way I feel about it. I don't know, there might be people who feel that way.
I think there's a lot more people that feel that way than. That look at it as just, I wanna preserve this.
Well, are there any specific comments on the choices here, I mean, are specific choices I made in the. In this as suggestions for critical scenic views and view sheds. Do those make sense, are they? Should they be described differently, what do you think?
No, I agree with the scenic view sheds, I'm just was putting out there that. On the after, it says the town should consider scenic values in development and land use um, decisions and it's pretty vague.
Where's that?
After also scenic skies.
It's the italic at the end.
Yeah, which is like the action item, correct?
Right.
Action for the town, yeah. Yeah, so that and I maybe we could be more specific there, so what some town plans have done. Instead of having something that's sort of very brief like this. Is they give more specific guidance about how you can put buildings in places without them being like. Here's my home. Um, you know, a lot of, a lot of second homes for some reason tend to do that, like spotlights facing it. Cut all the trees down, so everybody has to, and it's not, has nothing to do with what. The values of their own home or the right to have a house there, it's sort of like. Do we need to look at you all the time? Um, you know, I think there's some, some people who really, they spend a lot of money on a home and they want everybody to see it.
Well, you could have things in about, you know, natural colors are encouraged on roofs or. Um, shade uh, vegetative screening is encouraged from the major view sheds. I mean, you could ask stuff like that.
Do have, they have, some town plans have a whole section on how you can tastefully design these things, and I thought. Then maybe we didn't need to put all that in there.
Yeah.
And then we could put something a little, but it's a little vague.
Well, I, I mean, I guess it's fine that it's vague, I just thought that, I mean, depending on who's interpreting it. Depends on what, you know. Um, the scenic view and in the development, um, and land use decisions are. Like, is this a scenic view that shouldn't be developed at all and who's deciding that, I would, I mean, we've been over that, I guess, that it's whoever's Act, Act two fifty.
Yeah, there are very few cases where that actually happens, so in that case. So there's like, you know, and this is not my area of expertise, but there is a whole like. Kind of cascade of things that can happen, like choices that they can make. Oftentimes, they'll try to avoid the issue. So if you can reconfigure things, you can tweak things so that it, like sometimes it can just be like a little bit downslope or like behind some. Cover, anyway, avoidance is like usually the first step they take, and then like they kinda go down this. Kind of path, and in the rare case where there is like no way to. Make changes to a plan that will allow it to proceed, then it's considered like a pure taking, so like you're saying you can't build. And in that case, there are requirements for compensation, like if you say you can't do it. And they do have, then they have to like buy it, or you have, there are. So like, I'm not a constitutional lawyer, but there's this whole field of takings. And, uh, anyway, it gets very complicated and I just didn't wanna get, go down that road at all. Um.
Not a good road to drive.
Yeah, no, that was just some, my questions about that, okay.
Yeah, but I'm happy to try to, you know, I can send around some of the information that I found on the ways you could consider, like the.
We could just have another sentence that says, consideration shall be given to, um. Adaptations in location, uh, vegetative screening and or, you know, you could just have sort of a. A short laundry list.
Let's talk, yeah, we can mention a couple of techniques for. How they might be considered, would that make it a little bit more?
I think it's fine the way it is, now, I just, I guess I have questions about, like I said, um, if that. If that's to restrict what people do on their own property because somebody else can. Use this document to res, like with Act fifty to.
It's only Act two fifty development.
Well, this one, town action items wouldn't be policies for Act two fifty, this would be like, let's take for example. We have a subdivision and there's a building proposed for. I mean, eh, eh, this would be an egregious example of this, like right on top of a prominent ridgeline, I don't know, we've had that already happen. But I mean, actually, that's a good example, let's, let's, let's take an example, there's a subdivision planned on sorry rocks, let's pretend it hasn't been developed already. And they give us options on, you know, what they could, they wanna do and we can.
Didn't even get a building permit for that, did we?
I don't know, I wasn't involved, but, um, and let's say. There's an option of doing it in a way that kept the natural tree cover on top of it. And that screened it from view, like, there you go, and it turns out that's exactly what they did.
They did.
Thank God, cause if they raised the whole top of that mountain, it would be ugly as hell, might have been.
That's what they've done in Ludlow.
So they, they've actually talked to some people in town, they said they intend to keep it that way, and I think that's, that's good. Then that's a proper, they got what they wanted.
Right.
And then the town.
They got what they wanted and town got what they.
Yeah, so I think that's, that's a kind of a good, I mean, would it have been better for certain things if they had never done that, sure, but they, they got it, so.
Access to it gets in.
I mean, that's a whole other thing, whether the fairytale room, the doctor fires or not. But, uh, so let's, let's just put a note here, um, there might be some room for adding. Adding some examples or something. We'll see, we'll see, I can send some stuff around too if I can remember to do it. Um, that's historic areas, waving hands, it's all in yellow, I don't know what to write for those things, I could definitely use some advice.
Well.
Do, are, do those represent his- historic areas that we consider important? Is, is that a good list, first of all?
Well, there's a ton more houses that were on that state list.
Yeah, but. I don't know if I wanna get into that.
I mean, our cellar, yeah, like.
Well, we'd have to be specific, I guess, about what that even means.
Yeah.
Because there's a bajillion of cellar.
Yeah, well, that's what I was gonna say, like, you get into something like somebody's like, hey, I wanna put my driveway through here, I'm like, no, you can't disturb this, there's a cellar, where it's like.
Well, yeah, so that's, that's just specific, like, are there specific ones, you know, like, for example, it's all but special. Like, so the, I mean, I, I know Dennis fears very strongly about the cellar holes up on the, the Ray Farm. He loves those things.
Now, where's the Ray Farm?
Yeah, Abel Road.
Yale Lands.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
What about, uh?
Takes people out there almost every year, it's, it's a nice walk.
Cause they go on the walk of the, uh. They do the Yale Lot, but then also they don't, they do part of the.
Yes.
Road is that?
Hedgehog North goes out to.
Oh, um, Crown Point Road, right?
Yes.
Crown Point.
Yeah, well, this, the Ray Farm's not that, but the Crown Point is.
He does the Ray Farm and then the.
Yeah, well, the Ray Farm has the dedication from the Bowen family to the forest.
Well, you know what you don't have on here is the unmarked grave for the Revolutionary War. Oh, is it?
Yeah.
Oh.
Oh, and what's the kiln?
It's a place where they make bricks.
Yeah, I know, where is it?
Several of them.
Well, there are a number of them, kilns would be more properly put here, but there is a. One that's designated and it's in the, the sort of famous book of kilns, the Vermont Book of. Four hundred years of soot and steel, I think is the name of the book, I don't know if you've ever heard it, it's a, it's. I, I would hope you wouldn't, cause it's something nerds read, but, uh. It's a cool book that talks about the kilns of Vermont and, um, the one that's on the. One fifty five.
The land we just conserved.
That was conserved two years ago, there's a state designated kiln there.
Oh.
They.
So like, I think it was ten kiln, but that's not in Mount, Mount Holly ten kiln.
There's a bunch of them around and, you know, I think there was a variety of uses, Ma- Mount Holly supposedly was very big in the potash community. Back in the day, we burned a lot of wood and made a lot of ash. Uh, we also did some lime kiln, lime bricks and some other things, but they're kinda cool. I mean, they, they, they look like.
Yeah, no, I was just curious where one was, cause I was, I thought you were talking about ten kiln. Up in the national forest, I'm like, pretty sure that's in Mount Tabor, but.
Yeah, I mean, I've had things like barns, which totally hand wavy too, right, so. I don't know.
I know.
Rings of Barnes are kind of important is like, there used to be this barn preservation group and they actually got a lot of money. Oh, Andy's back.
He's come, oh.
We can't hear ya.
We can't hear you.
Sorry about that. Uh, drove into a, drove into a canyon and, uh, lost all connection. What, what's that?
Well, I think we're just about, we're almost at the end, but we were at, on historic areas. Um, and I was describing how I have this list here, but it's super hand wavy and there's no, no information yet. Um. The Okemo Fire Tower I nominated for the National Registry and they have not done anything about it yet.
The National Registry people or the state?
The National Fire Lookout Association Historic Registry. That's, that's a group, that's what they do.
And Okemo Mountain Road, you're talking about the part that's in Mount Holly, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
No, we wasn't, that was in Ludlow.
Well, yeah, I mean, it's hard to, where do, you know, there's no.
Where's the dividing line?
Yeah, there's no marker, is that where the Mount Holly overlook is and is it up higher or is it?
Oh.
Yeah, but those overlooks and the road itself and even the culverts were all built by hand by the CCC. And, uh, it's kinda cool, like, they, you know, they did design drawings for everything back then, they had architects do stuff and. Like, the, some of the stone works cool and, and it's kind of driving the state a little bit crazy because they have to go through a preservation plan just to fix their damn culverts. But.
That's good.
Yeah, I guess. Um.
I'd like to see how much money it takes.
They, um, what I, the, I don't know if I should repeat this, the term that I heard, uh, the state used to describe the historians is hysterians.
Well, everyone uses that.
They do, at the, at first I had heard of it, cause I guess they're, they can be a little intense. Anthony Scoville House, everybody knows what that one is, Dolly Road. The modernist building.
Oh, yeah, 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 it's been for sale forever.
The Bauhaus style, yeah. Um, alright, so anyway, these all look, I mean, Hillville Sawmills, there's not much left there.
I don't even know where it is.
It's Red Station Road.
There was a old, old Hillville station there too, I mean, a railroad station there, but.
Yeah, there's, there's a concrete water box up there on the side of the mountain too.
What about all the old schoolhouses, the one-room schoolhouses, you don't have those on the list?
Do we have any left?
Yeah. The one, yeah, across from the cheese factory is a.
Well, we could put it.
A schoolhouse.
Almost all of them, from my understanding, have been moved from their original locations, but I could be wrong.
I think that one across from Helen Farm Road was a schoolhouse, wasn't it?
Schoolhouse, I don't know, we'll just write schoolhouse.
Yeah.
Well, not just that, but like if somebody privately owns.
No, it's not one of the cemetery.
Well, that's the reason.
It's just bull.
It's sort of like.
And there's.
Most of them are privately owned, like.
The one up Belmont, I think is gone.
I'm not gonna send your kid to public one-room schoolhouse.
By Francis Turbels up there.
No, that, isn't that the house that, oh, she just died.
Eight through six, one room.
Yeah, that's an old schoolhouse.
Three other kids.
What's the name? She died of cancer, he's still there.
That's Hannah.
No, you gotta arrange that, don't worry.
Oh, he'll go to the other school down the street.
Whatever it is, across from the cheese.
I'm thinking of the one up Belmont Road.
Oh, Belmont Road, sorry, where's that?
The other two are cousins.
It was right across from, uh, Bob and Herb's, I believe.
Oh.
I think it was across the road, somewhere right in by, across from Bob Herb's.
Okay, you know, the museum has a ton of information on all of this stuff.
Yeah, I, I don't wanna become too much of a historical document, but it's, it's interesting to note things that might be, you know, things that. A big Act two fifty comes in, wants to wipe away, you know, clear an area, what are some things that we might be sensitive to? I don't know.
Well, I was just gonna say, I was wondering how, um, what we think about cellar holes? Because there are a lot of cellar holes all over the area, uh, some. Were former schoolhouses, some were residents, uh, I don't, just don't know whether we wanna start thinking about those as historic sites.
The same question, and we probably don't, there's too many, they're not significant enough. Although, sometimes it's like you don't know the significance until later, of course, but. Um, maybe there's a way we can put a caveat on whether they're special, but maybe we should just drop it, cause it's too much work to try to. Characterize that into something that matters.
Well, what I was gonna suggest was saying that the museum has a treasure trove of information about these locations. If people need additional information.
About cellar hole?
No, about that.
All that stuff, okay.
See, I know where there's an open well right in the middle of the road.
Well, there's also all of the spring boxes.
The hole's about that big around. I have no idea how deep it goes down, but it's a well.
What are you talking about? Where's the open well?
It's an open well.
Long road.
It's a private road.
Oh.
Back up the woods.
Off of your neighbor's property?
Uh, not on my neighbors, uh, down on, uh, Betty and Rick's neighbor.
Oh.
Yeah, I almost fell in at once. It is, it's, it's only, you can be walking around along and all of a sudden, oh, there it is, it's about that big around.
Well. Okay, that's a different.
Yeah, well, so one, one other thing that I don't think everybody else heard that Andrew said is. Well, what can we even say about these things? Most of these things are private, um. And it's, it's a fair point, uh, one thing that town plans in the past have said that I've sort of felt was like a little bit tragic. One of the top, the number one, it seemed at the time, the number one most important. Historical artifact in the town, I think it was in the nineteen ninety-three plan or maybe even earlier. To be preserved, it says the town shall preserve all these things, was Summit Station. And of course, we know that that's gone, it's torn down, it was moved for Slim's house first and then torn down, so there's no trace of it. And like, so what good did it do? I don't know, I mean, it's a, it's a fair question, you know, what could we could even say that would matter?
I mean, there's, I think there's some historic areas that we can reference, but like, the schoolhouses, if they're privately owned, like.
Yeah.
What's the town, like, if somebody buys it and wants to deck it out and does something that doesn't even look like a schoolhouse anymore?
I know.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's a real bummer that we have no train stations left.
Well, isn't the one on one oh three?
Yeah, the, the one from East Wallingford wasn't in Mount Holly and it was merged, and it's a private residence.
Three?
Yeah.
And what about the one on your road? That supposedly was a train station too.
There's nothing on my road, no.
On the opposite side of you.
Oh, you're, you're thinking about Slim's old house and it was torn down. So Summit Station was moved to be Slim's house and then he tore it when, after he died, it was torn down and it's this little place was built instead. So, yeah, I know, it would've been really cool to have a historical train station, since trains are a big part of our town's history, but anyway. So it's something to keep in mind as we're writing this, like what, you know, what we could, policies we could even have, but.
Good references, there's a lot of, you know, there's whatever number of historic homes still viable in town.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, like, like, some of them are falling down, there's not much you can do.
Right, the summer are in good shape.
Yeah.
Much you can do to control them, it's like, it just matters, like, the people that buy them care about them.
Yeah.
If they don't.
I know.
There's no.
Yeah, cause it's like, you know, I wish there was something we could say that would elevate their. Status for, you know what I mean, like, it would be nice to say, hey, that's an important thing, and that would infuse some money into the situation. From some sort of mysterious outside, but there, I don't know of anything like that, so, anyway, just a thought.
Well, where does, where does the money that, uh, has been used to preserve historic barns, where does that come from?
From the states, um.
Historic Preservation Agency.
Agency or.
Right, and, and would they have funds to preserve historic buildings?
Faith is gonna answer our question.
Okay, so, uh, there are grants from the state, and there was also the Mount Holly Barn Preservation Society. Which has now been dissolved, and, but it did raise its own funds. And at one point had managed to get through grants and also fundraising activities about thirty thousand dollars, I think. Um, but the role of the society was also to link barn owners with the state. To get the matching grants and to help you to complete the, the grant application process. And most of the money for the barns around town that have been, uh, have assistance from, uh, grants. The grants have been the state grants.
Right.
So there is a, the state has a historic preservation entity.
Yeah.
And they give out grants to protect historic buildings. So the Perkins House, which is the museum in town, got a big grant, four hundred thousand, and the barns have gotten money and. Um, you know, things like the Belmont Store could probably qualify for money.
Mechanicsville General Farm.
Yeah, I very much doubt that that's working open as, I mean, so that, that they, they do have a new owner, as probably everybody's aware, so. I did get, oh, that's something I forgot to disclose to you in emails, in correspondence, that I can cure my violation to now. Um, I got an email from Alyssa. Um, I got an email from Alyssa, I believe her name is Alyssa Tilly. Who identified herself as the new owner of the store, asking for assistance with tax credits. For the store, for uh updates to the store. And I replied to her, um sort of on behalf of. Faith and myself and us, um saying that it is true that we do have a village center designation. And advised her that the designation is expiring in April of next year. And we're doing our endamnness to get this town plan done so that we could renew it. And that's kind of how I left it. She had already found that there were. Grants avail- tax credits rather, available for improvements to the the building. And that's about it, I believe. Did I did I get summarize that right? I was, you copied you on it and. She hasn't responded back yet, but uh so that that did happen, so.
It's interesting that that store, there's pictures of it with. Two or three steps from the road up to win the store. And now the road is higher than the store.
Well, because they kept putting more pavement on the road.
But it's interesting to see the pictures.
Yeah.
And I I'm not sure the pavement through there is that thick.
Well, that's, everybody I've talked to says it's their store hasn't moved. It's that the pavement has been added to year after year without being scarfed down.
And even since two thousand and one. The, I mean, the pavement has got a sort of that much around the side of the store and down the.
But it's it's interesting to see the old pictures and look at it now and it's. Something wrong here, folks.
Does seem like, um what is you thirty four or what is the address of your former residence? Twenty four. It does seem like the road has gained on that dwelling as well, like it the road has. On that note, um, one of the things that will be in the discussion on next Wednesday. Is that there is sort of a priority is the stormwater system for the village is. Um basically non-functional. And uh one of the parts of the sort of, for lack of a better term, master planning for the village. Will be um figuring out how to fund a stormwater system replacement. Like you can catch bases in front of the firehouse are basically not doing anything. So uh. That will hopefully help with a number of things if we can figure out how to do that cuz it replacement is gonna involve a lot of tearing up of the. Streets and everything. Hopefully, we will no longer have a giant gaping hole on on Belmont Road where. All kinds of stuff can fall in, you know what I'm talking about, right in front of the store, the opposite the store.
Oh, yeah.
Between the two tell- uh utility poles there, there's a giant. So anyway, that's that's a part of that effort and Jeff Chase has been ki- kind of tracking that one. That's something that's been on his.
I think that one's been there ever since I've been here.
Yeah, it's probably been there for a while, so. All right, I think we've uh covered everything. Anything else? No public comments? We don't have uh. Peter? You have any comments? Okay. Upcoming meetings, well, we have this.
Be here for the next, if you're doing a special meeting, I won't be here.
Okay. Well, I think we will try to keep marching on the on the plan. It remains to be seen how we will do that on Zoom. Think we'll have to, maybe Faith and I will get put our heads together on that one. I think we may end up pulling that computer back out. It might be the easiest. Thing.
That'll be what at seven?
Andy, what is your availability for the next working meeting? Do you have a calendar available?
I have uh. N- no conflict.
On June seventh, okay, then we'll shoot for seven then, if that's acceptable to everybody.
That works for me, works well.
And then a regular meeting on the twenty first. Um I think we can just. Keep marching along on the in the order if possible through the through the document, that's unreasonable. Anything else we should? I mean, we could try to follow up on a few things from tonight, like getting more historical stuff, but. I like to try to keep moving forward, so.
All right, Andy, out out on the old sword farm up here. Out on the end, that clearing out there. That hole out there and was that a start of a quarry hole or do you have any idea what that was?
Be honest with you, I've been out there like two times in my life. So that was gone long before I was doing anything with.
Oh, it's still there.
No, no, the the that parcel of land was sold off a long time before I.
There's a, it's about a six foot square hole. I think it's all quartz, if I remember.
Stop and ask my father or uncle, he might know.
I was just curious, and I think they used to cut stone up there somewhere. In the winter time, uh they they drill the stone, fill holes full of water and plug them. And then go back in the spring and collect the stone. They put like stone bolts down. And the stones would come off and on the bolts and then they haul them down out of there. I think that's where that was.
Oh, well, there used to be some pretty nice barns out there.
Way out the end.
On the road up over the hill.
Nope. Go by, go, when you go by your house, keep right going straight.
Yeah.
But no, right straight out.
All right, I think that's it.
Thank you.
Meeting is adjourned eight thirty nine.
Production services by Okemo Valley TV.